I want call to order the regular meeting of the Litchfield City Council. I'm going to ask all of you to stand, pledge allegiance to the flag, and William Dallas is going to lead us.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever being thus.
Compared to some of our last agendas, we have a pretty lengthy agenda for tonight. And we have standing in is Kristi Higdon, our county payable, and Sabrina, our finance officer, standing. Lori has gone to Chicago. And it's good to have Tudy by. And Jessica, was you at her last meeting?
I was at last.
Yeah, she was gone as well, so we've got a full crew on tonight. While I've got everyone's attention, especially those watching by streaming, our last meeting in July, our last regular meeting in July, we're going to plan that to be our last streaming through Facebook. We're trying to convert everything over to YouTube. YouTube's a much better service, and all those meetings are cataloged, you can go back and watch any of them. And we asked that you subscribe to those, and it costs nothing. When I see subscribe, I think money, but subscription to YouTube is nothing. And subscribe, there's two or three on there, so don't get confused. It's City of Litchfield KY, and you'll see some of the past city council meetings on there. So I said we've got a pretty lengthy agenda, we're going to try to stick to our agenda and address that. Kristi's going to kind of monitor the streaming service and see if there's any questions, is there any appropriate questions we need to address, we will do that towards the end of the meeting. So the first thing on our agenda is approval amendments of the regular meeting of June 7, 2021. I asked Billy Dallas to look at that earlier, and he kind of gave me the nod that it looked pretty good. Billy?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second by Moon Smith. All in favor? Billy, what about the ratification of the bills?
Good, we had a couple of questions for Kristi, and she took care of them.
Okay.
So moved.
We've got some seconds over here. Marjorie Decker and Clayton seconded too, but we won't count his. All in favor? I'll let you second next time, Clayton.
Well, that's all right.
Approval of April 2021 financial statement, is that in her package, Sabrina, or is that one we had before?
No, it's in there.
It is in there, right here it is.
You're getting ahead of yourself.
You skipped one.
On the agenda, you skipped one.
Oh, on the agenda.
Yeah.
I see, my agenda was printed before. Here, I've got a copy right here, and I make notes all day on what I want to talk about. So when I come in here, it had been changed. Yeah, I see that. Approval to remove Hannah Tom from the checking accounts and add Marsha Young effective July 12, 2021. Utility to approve this June 17, and tourism has it on their agenda for tomorrow. So do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'm going to let Jessica make a motion. Moon second it. All in favor? Marsha's our newest employee, and she came from Campbell-Hosfield, and it seems like she has worked out real well in the office. We're very pleased to have her. She's a... Okay, now we'll get back to mine. Let's see if we can follow it. Approval, April 21, 2021 financial statement.
I'm making a motion.
Okay, Clayton, make a motion. Second by Marjorie. All in favor?
All right.
Tim Duval is our fire chief. Tim brought to me in my office about 10 days or so ago some changes that he wanted to make to the bylaws that govern the fire department. We didn't have a discussion at that time, so that's one reason I've asked Tim to come down for tonight's meeting, explain what changes that he's... What changes it is, and Tim, you want to come before the council, please? I don't have the notes that you gave me, I think they're in Lori's office.
There's nobody has copies. That's fine, I can explain them.
No, here's some. Litchfield Fire Department, standard operating procedures.
She put in the packet just the changes.
Yeah, it is in there.
The changes.
Tell me what's going to be... What's changed, Tim, or what you want changed?
First thing we would like to change, for your approval, is the application process. The original says that they must have a background check plus a drug screening before they can even put an application in. So that could be a pretty good expense for them, and not even maybe have a chance to get on and lose the money that they had to spend to get those to us.
What are you suggesting, after you vote them on, then do that?
I suggest after...
Let the city bear the expense of it?
I suggest after it goes through the officers, we approve it, then they come back to us with the background check and the drug screening.
But the city will pay for it then?
Well, maybe.
Well, really, they don't have a risk of not being voted on then.
If the officers at the fire department approve it, the city should be... I mean, they're going through process there.
At the background checks, city hall does those, and they're free. So it'll be the screening process.
If you've got somebody that's wanting to get on, we need, I mean...
They're not free.
No, we know they're not.
Background checks, no? Really? Okay.
It's not a lot.
It don't cost me that much.
Well, 50 a person, but it's not very...
I don't see any problem with that change. Moon, you see any problem with that change?
I don't see no problem with it. Before, we didn't even have to come down here. We done it on our own.
Well, when we changed these operating procedures, we kind of took some of the authority out of the firehouse and brought it to city hall.
Right.
And that's one reason he's here. Does anybody see any problem with this change? What else is there, Billy? I mean, Billy, Tim?
After that process, we'll come to you, and hopefully you will give us our blessing to go ahead and put this person to the membership, vote on them, and get them started as a new member.
I like taking advice from our department heads and chiefs, and I always have yours. Now Lori was a little bit concerned, was this presented to the officer meeting and they approved that?
Right.
Is that what your documents are not?
That's the minutes, they're in a special call meeting and a regular meeting, which you have in your package.
She didn't have that information at first, and she was a little bit concerned that you'd had approval of that. So if there's no objection by the council, I'm going to sign that for Tim tomorrow.
Erlene, did we even have to vote on that? Is that something that they can just amend or adjust?
That is, but what I would recommend is that every person at the fire department receive a copy of that amendment, and that will... I would ask that they sign that they received it, that they know that that's a change in their policies.
We usually do that. I'm doing that copy.
I think the mayor's got signed to enact it.
Since it was a SOG policy change, it would be a bylaw change or ordinance change.
Yes, yes, it wouldn't be an ordinance.
Because we adopted them instead.
Yes, yes.
Is anything else, Tim?
Yeah, I've got two more.
Okay.
I try not to take up too much of your time. All right. Let me get these on real quick. The next one, it stated that the chief only could, like if we have trouble with one of the members at a scene or something like that, only the chief could take care of it, remove the person, I may not be there. Rare occasions that I'm not, but it should state that any officer on that scene could remove someone if needed be. So the way it's stated, it says that I myself is the only one that could do it.
I hope for you to delegate that authority out other than yourself.
Right.
Except in a rare circumstance.
It would have to be a bad situation before we...
Don't you also have IC in there too? IC and... And the only trouble with that, you knows what I do, there could be somebody young that's IC before anybody gets there.
Right. You're right.
So that's the question I have, do you really want to include IC? I understand delegating your authority down, but somebody could take IC and be...
A lot of times your government's not going to do that, but...
So that would be the only suggestion I would make, that you wanted to...
I would expect that to be in a rare circumstance. Any other comment on this particular issue? What else you got, Tim?
One more thing, it's due to run. You want me to just read it all, or it's pretty lengthy, or?
Which one are you on?
Page 33, section 4.
Types of runs?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Just highlighted, I guess, and if the council's got some questions they can ask you about?
This is something the state mandates also. Because they're volunteers, they're not employees of the city, that's what I'm told.
That's right.
The state pays their workers' comp if they get injured or hurt or worse, hopefully it never happens, and it just, you know, they've got to have their proper attire on. They've got to have some type of turnout gear, you know? And we're trying to eliminate, and we've done pretty good to eliminate PLVs on the scene, except for medical assistance and stuff like that, you know, they drive to that, but like parkways, roadways, or something like that, if they run over and get hurt and get killed, they won't be covered.
If they don't have their gear on, like...
And that's the first thing I ask when you fill out a worker's comp, did they have their gear on?
Yeah.
Did they have their proper gear?
And that's why, I don't know, page 33 requires that they turn out with their gear on.
Do you have enough gear for everyone?
Mm-hmm. Yep. That's why we're trying to eliminate some PLVs.
I see.
You know, they need to go to the firehouse, get a truck, respond with appropriate apparatus and gear for that situation.
Trying to avoid people going right to the scene.
Right, yeah.
Undressed. Why do you think, Billy?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Moon?
Probably.
Okay, that's our two firemen on the staff, I don't see any issue. Nobody else does either.
That's it.
Is that it?
Yep.
Anybody else got any questions for Tim, or any issues that he's brought before the city council?
What about this surplus?
I think that's a different one.
That's a different one.
Yeah.
Both of them, oh, they are, they're rocket.
Yeah. I think we're going to work with you on that. Tim, thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome.
You're doing an excellent job. You're probably the best fire chief we've got today.
In your term.
Don't you think so, Kristi Higdon?
Yes.
You have also in your package, there's something that we've been working on for about two years, approval for the mayor to execute the MOA for the Bevel Park Trail Extension Grant. I think I totaled it $149,000. This will include a path kind of at the end of the parking lot, of the swimming pool, and circle around, and it should include our disc off. Tammy?
Once we finish the pathway, then we can focus on the disc off.
On the disc off.
We have to abide by what's in the grant itself before we do any other changes.
But that's where the area that the next nine holes will be.
That's where they look at us.
Yeah. Wonder what's the timeframe, once we approve this tonight and I sign this tomorrow, what's the timeframe?
Well, we'll have to put it out to bid.
Oh, okay. There's a guy kept calling me, and I think you met with him, at Parsons?
Yes.
And I think somebody else came later, that had done these. It's going to be difficult to bid because each one of them has a different vision of what that ought to be over there.
Right.
So do I hear a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Tammy, is there anything else you want to tell me about that park trail extension grant?
About the grant that we received, well, it's, we definitely have to have at least a, leave it's a one-mile paved track, that's got to be six feet wide, long enough for a bike, wide enough for a bike and a person.
A human, yeah.
Can use it. So that's why it has to be at least six feet wide.
I think that's great.
Once that's completed, then the extra funding can go towards the other, so we have to do the trail part before we do the non-ike path or disc off, so as soon as that's completed, then we can go on to the next.
Do somebody else we want? Well, I drove, I went to the park this morning, it's clean, I go up at Upper Bevel, it's clean, I appreciate that. Wonder about the ballpark, it's all, everything's picked up, going to the pool, it's all picked up, and I appreciate that. It really, really looks good.
It's a lot of work, we spent Saturday morning, a trash bag was let loose from Avenue, High Center, all the way down to the softball area, so we spent Saturday morning picking up some of the trash.
Picking that.
Hey, what's the cost to rent the park, like these tournaments? What are you collecting on them?
It's $125 a field.
They have an option to get the girls park too, when you have them?
Yeah. I haven't, I haven't had a whole lot of softball tournaments. Turn two, I think, is doing less.
Do they rent three or four at Little League Park?
I'm sorry?
At Little League Park, do they rent three or four?
They usually rent three.
The three?
Yeah. And then they try to blow down the softball.
All the girls' park?
Yes.
Is that about right, as far as renting feels? What's Etown?
I'm sorry?
What's Etown, a couple hundred dollars?
Oh, Etown's a lot more expensive, they're 200, and they have a tiny crane, and yeah, they're a little more expensive than...
You'll have a lot of that electricity if you play like $125.
They're usually done seven thirty, last game was around, I think seven, because I think is the latest you've had a game start.
Maybe next year you can see about adjusting, see if we need to...
I know, the softball had recommended that we, if they go into nighttime, we should charge an extra for you.
I agree.
Nexus. Tammy, why don't you stand at the microphone, please? Since you got, we got you on the platform here.
Sorry.
Why don't you tell us the change that you and I talked about, the aquatic park?
I've had a lot of people approach me in reference to a season pass. My dilemma with that is if COVID rears its ugly head, refunds. And we had a nightmare with the refunds for baseball and softball. You know, that's over 300 checks that we had to write out. So the mayor and I discussed it, and I also talked with Elsa about it. We do a season pass, but the people who get the season pass agree that it's non-refundable. So that's a chance that they take.
That's just what it's, if you're wanting to do, I mean, what you got left, two months? Two months and a couple weeks?
Yeah, so I think it's just knowing that it's non-refundable, that if we do have to shut down, God forbid, in two weeks maybe we have to shut down, that they realize they're not going to get their money back.
And you get the passes printed and you have out here looking.
I had a parent come to her this week and told how much they had spent on the pool, and asked if we couldn't re-estate. And since the state limitations on, restrictions on how many people can be in there, we can go at 100% capacity, there's no reason not to issue a season pass.
So we're up to 100% now? We can do 100%?
My understanding, we can do 100%, and we, there's no, while there's still social distancing and stuff like that, people have to use... We had a lady come in the other day, which I thanked her for, and her son was not feeling well, so we took his temperature, and he was running a low-grade fever, so she made him go home, and I thanked her for taking those type of precautions. But it's kind of hard to regulate that, unfortunately, and we're still doing our cleaning and so forth, just trying to keep up with the policy as much as possible.
What would you do, just cut half the price? Cut them on what a full one was last year? How are you going to come up with a number?
After, after a certain time of the season, we do the pool pass at half price.
Right.
Yeah. We're getting, I think it's mid-July is when we start doing the half price.
So you think about just starting early?
I don't know. I think they would, they would get their money out of it if we went ahead and did it now, full price now, and they would still, they would still justify getting all their money out. You're talking four people for 225. This lady that called me earlier, she had spent only 125, and she goes just about three or four or five times a week, so she's there every day, basically, for kids.
We're lucky to be open anyway, so...
Yeah, it's open from 10:30 to 7 o'clock now, so we have plenty of time for people to get there.
Yeah.
Any comment from Tammy, Moon, Clayton, Marjorie?
No, sir.
Tudy?
No, sir.
Jessica? Billy?
Good deal.
You got anything else to tell us?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy, you're doing an excellent job. You're probably one of the best partial recreation directors we've ever had. I don't know why that's funny. Okay. First reading of an ordinance establishing regulatory license fee for the sale of alcoholic beverages for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Erlene, is this your part?
It is. All right. Whereas the City of Litchfield, Kentucky is authorized to impose a regulatory license fee on the sale of alcoholic beverages of each establishment therein licensed to sell alcoholic beverages pursuant to KRS 243.075 and City of Litchfield Ordinance Number 2018-16, Section 20, and Ordinance Number 2018-17, Section 1, Article 4, and whereas the city has reviewed the regulatory license fee revenues from the prior fiscal year as well as the expenditures related to the additional policing, regulatory, and administrative expenses related to the sale of alcoholic beverages in the city, with the copy of income statement being attached here too, and incorporated herein by reference, and whereas the city finds that the current regulatory license fees are reasonably estimated to somewhat reimburse the city for the additional policing, regulatory, and administrative expenses related to the sale of alcoholic beverages in the city. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows, Section 1, the regulatory license fee shall be a 6% of gross sales of alcoholic beverages sold by the drink, by retail sales of packaged distilled spirits and wines, and by retail sales of packaged malt beverages. Section 2, if any section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason declared illegal, unconstitutional, or otherwise invalid, such declaration shall not affect the remaining portions hereof. Section 3, if any provision of this ordinance is in conflict with provisions of existing ordinances or laws, it is the intent of the city council of the City of Litchfield, Kentucky, that the provisions of this ordinance shall govern in such provisions in existing ordinances or laws in conflict herewith or hereby rescinded, this ordinance is effective upon final reading and publication.
Anybody got any issue with that? Hear a motion?
Your honor, uh, your honor. Mayor, we won't vote until next time, this is a board of three.
Next time? We take in, the 6% brings in right at $300,000 in revenue, and I don't think that's license fees, I think that's strictly from the sale of it, isn't it, Sabrina?
I think that includes the license fees too.
It does, okay. $300,000 total. Not every city can get sale, percentage of the sales, because we were formerly a fourth-class city and makes us a home rural city, but cities that are selling alcohol, that was not a fourth-class city, like some of our neighboring counties, cannot charge any tax on it. And that was always a little bit confusing. Okay, we'll vote on that again next time. We had agreed previously to sell the old police department building to the Grayson County Government, and if you've listened much, the fiscal court voted last meeting to have that, and Judge Henderson asked that he be offered a deal, which we, can I say the specifics of this? Sabrina, I think I can, it's kind of public knowledge.
Yes, it's public knowledge, you can do that. And I asked that you actually receive a vote that we do it.
Accept it?
Yes, because previously we had voted for the sale price, but we hadn't set the exact terms.
Terms of the sale.
So they allowed you, at a previous vote, to sign the contract, but not specific terms, so...
Well, here are the terms, and it's in your package, where Erlene drafted the contract to be signed by myself and Judge Henderson. It's $50,000 in this fiscal year, which would be this month. And then the balance, we put over two years, $100,000 next fiscal year, then $100,000 the next, and it would, the $200,000 would be drawn at 3.5% interest. And anybody got any issue with that? Moon?
I'm fine with it.
You want to make a motion?
I'm making it.
Let's, Clayton.
No, he's got it.
Okay, well, Clayton second it then. Clayton, you second it. And anybody got any issue with it? We all in favor? All vote in favor of it? Raise your hand.
Yes.
Yay.
And mayor, you'll need a separate vote to declare this surplus, you didn't include that in that motion.
Okay. You want to do that? Is that in our agenda?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, there it is, that's what I'm reading right now. Approval of surplus to old police department building. Okay, do I hear a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, Jessica. Surplus, though, all in favor? I tell you what, I've had about half the people tell me I didn't get enough out of it, and half of the people told me we got too much, so I guess it just bounces out. And I think Judge Henderson had about the same response. Some of his supporters told him he gave too much, and some told him that he didn't give enough, so they're going, they have purchased those apartments behind the police department, and they're going to make an addition to the police department that's going to property. So we wish them well. Lori's been drafting an advertisement to put up the old city hall for sale and/or lease, and she's been working on that, but she hasn't gotten it done yet.
Actually, we, Lori and I did that together, and it's already, it should be coming out in the paper this week.
Okay, well, I didn't know how far we got on that.
There's already packets in city hall for anyone that wanted to be back.
Have you had any queries?
Not that I'm aware of.
And we, it's going to be out for three weeks.
I bought that.
Do we have to declare it a surplus too?
Well...
We will. We, you know, they have three weeks to bid, so we were gonna, I knew it was going to be a tight meeting, so we can do that at the next meeting.
You know what happened, Tudy, on the recycle building? We put that out for bid, and nobody bid on it, maybe twice, or maybe nobody bid high enough twice, then it left us free to just take who offered it the most, and then for it. So we're kind of thinking this might work for this.
Yeah.
I think we give, I had the note on my desk, I think we give $65,000 for this building, the building that we're trying to occupy. Okay, first reading of the 2021 amended budget.
Whereas the City of Litchfield, Kentucky has heretofore adopted its budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021, by ordinance enacted June 22, 2020, and amended February 1, 2021, and whereas it is necessary to amend the said budget ordinance in order to more accurately reflect the revenues and expenditures of the City of Litchfield, Kentucky in certain budget categories. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows, that Section 1 and 2 of the herein above described budget ordinance are amended to read as follows, with deleted portions being indicated by a solid line drawn through them, and added portions being indicated by a solid line drawn beneath them. The projected cash at June 30, 2020, in the general fund was $6,010,680, amended to $7,699,000 in floor, and the utility fund, $10,742,301, amended to $10,854,667, tourism fund, $704,608, amended to $1,214,105. The revenue, net profit returns in the general fund, $330,000, amended to $480,000. Occupational taxes, amending from $2,060,000 to $2,500,000. Property taxes, from $602,500 to $654,000. Insurance license taxes, from $900,000 to $1 million. Franchise taxes, $325,000, stays the same at $325,000. ABC application and regulatory fees, $225,400 to $252,100. Other licenses, $950 to $800. Restaurant taxes in the general fund, $525,000. Restaurant taxes in the general fund, five hundred and twenty-five thousand to seven hundred and seventy thousand. In the tourism fund, five hundred and twenty-five thousand to seven hundred and seventy thousand. Transfer of restaurant taxes, negative five hundred and twenty-five thousand to negative seven hundred and seventy thousand. Hotel taxes, six thousand, five hundred to seven thousand, five hundred. In the general fund and tourism fund, six thousand, five hundred to seven thousand. Transfer of hotel taxes, negative six thousand, five hundred to negative seven thousand, five hundred in the general fund. Mineral severance income from nine thousand, five hundred to seventeen thousand in the general fund. Rental income, fifty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty to thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty. Other income, or other revenue, ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventeen to seven hundred, thirty-two thousand, five hundred and seven. Interest income, thirty-five thousand, twenty-five, stays the same at thirty-five thousand, twenty-five. Sale of property, nothing to two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred. Grant income from eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred to one seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred in the general fund. And from five hundred in the tourism fund to nine hundred. HP 413 base court revenue in the general fund from twelve thousand to seven thousand, five hundred. Incentive pay, eighty-two thousand, stays the same at eighty-two thousand. IDC employee contribution stays the same at one hundred, fourteen thousand, eight hundred. Volunteer fire run stays the same at five hundred. Grayson County Fire dues from one hundred and thirty thousand to one hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred. State aid fire department stays the same at eleven thousand. Planning and zoning permits from four thousand, six hundred to four thousand, nine hundred. Municipal road aid, hundred and twenty thousand to three hundred, seven thousand, six hundred and fifty. Garbage pickup fees, one million, two hundred thousand to one million, three hundred and fifty thousand. Solid waste dumping fees, six hundred and fifty thousand to seven hundred and thirty-six thousand. Recycling fees, ten thousand to three thousand, four hundred. Animal shelter, animal control income, seventy thousand, one hundred and fifty to eighty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five. Parks income, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred to sixty-six thousand, six hundred. Recreational income, twenty-seven thousand to ninety-two thousand, fifty. In the utility fund, water sales, one million, nine hundred, seventy-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five to two million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty. Sewer sales, one million, six hundred, two thousand, six hundred to one million, eight hundred, ten thousand. Gas sales, two million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred to two million, six hundred, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty. Grant rural development funding for water treatment plant, eight million, six hundred thousand to four million, five hundred thousand. In the tourism fund, tourism other income, from five thousand to six thousand, six hundred. Tourism aquatic center revenue from eighty-nine thousand to twenty-five thousand, one hundred. Total current year revenue in the general fund from seven million, nine hundred, fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two to nine million, four hundred, fifty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven. Utility fund, fourteen million, five hundred, three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five to eleven million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety. Tourism fund, six hundred and twenty-six thousand to eight hundred and nine thousand, six hundred. Total revenue in carry forward, general fund, thirteen million, nine hundred, seventy-six, seventy-two to seventeen million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-one. Utility fund, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-six, twenty-five million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-six to twenty-one million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven. In the tourism fund, one million, three hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and eight to two million, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and five. Expenditures, general and admin, on the, in the general fund, three million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty to three million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty. Alcohol beverage control, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and five to three hundred and forty-one thousand, two seventy-five. Industrial development coordinator, one hundred and twenty-four thousand to one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred. Police department, one million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-five to one million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six. Fire department, one million, seven hundred, two thousand, five hundred and twenty-five to eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. Planning and zoning, ninety-five thousand, four hundred to ninety-three thousand, one hundred and fifty. Public works department, two million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-five to two million, seven hundred, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five. Animal shelter, animal control, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two seventy-five. Parks, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight twenty-five. Recreation, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, twenty-five to three hundred and eighty-one thousand, four twenty-five. In the utility fund, water, two million, four hundred, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifteen to two million, nine hundred, eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five. Sewer, two million, eighty-four thousand and fifty to two million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty. Gas, two million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, ninety to two million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and forty. Capital improvements, from eight million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand to four million, nine hundred, ninety-nine thousand, four hundred. And the tourism, from the tourism fund, four hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventeen to four hundred, six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven. Tourism aquatic center, five hundred and seventeen thousand, fifty to four hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred. Total current year expenses, general fund, eleven million, two hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five to ten million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six. Utility fund, fifteen thousand, sorry, fifteen million, five hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five to twelve million, three hundred and sixty thousand, seventy-five. In the tourism fund, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven to eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven. Current year net income or loss, general fund, it was a loss of three million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-three to a loss of one million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine. Utility fund, one million, loss of one million, forty-seven thousand, thirty to a loss of one million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-five. The tourism fund, a loss of three hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven to a loss of forty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven. Adjustment for non-cash budget items depreciation in the utility fund, one million, two hundred, one thousand, five hundred to one million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred. Projected ending cash balance with carry forward in the general fund, two million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and seventeen to six million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and five. The utility fund, ten million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one to ten million, eight hundred, one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two. The tourism fund, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, six forty-one to one million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight.
My goodness. Long numbers. Long numbers.
That's it, that's all I got for that one.
Thank goodness. Now, we're going to vote, we're not going to vote on this?
Uh-uh.
Are we going to vote on it tomorrow night, special meeting?
Yep, that was just the first reading.
Okay.
You'll get to listen to it again.
That'd be tomorrow, four thirty. Okay. Next on our agenda is the mayor's message about the budget and the financial, uh, strength of the city of Litchfield. You got a copy of it in your packet. Dear council members, I am presenting to you our proposed budget for the 2021 and 2022 fiscal year. Each year, the Budget Committee begins meeting in May to begin the process of presenting a sound and responsible budget for the upcoming year. For those of you who have served on the Budget Committee, you know it's not an easy task. This process involves every department head, committee members, the city clerk, the finance officer, and myself. We've had several meetings to gather all the information we need in order to accomplish this goal. This process involves looking where the city is today, where it has been in the past, and where we want to take it in the future. I can say this year's task was better than some of the previous years. Sabrina has done an excellent job in preliminary work with the department heads, which helped the process along. We also felt like the requests by department heads were, for the most part, reasonable. And this Budget Committee also, which consists of Marjorie Decker, Clayton Miller, and Moon Smith, was great to work with. The best news for the fiscal, coming fiscal year is that the large sum of money spent on the purchase and renovation of this building will not repeat itself in our lifetime. We have a show, showplace well located well that the community will be able to use for many years. I think the city and the community owe a debt of gratitude to our city clerk for taking over this project. The bright side is our partners, the Litchfield Utilities, has increased their rent for their portion of the building. We have agreed to sell the old police department to the county for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and have agreed to place the old city hall building up for sale or lease. As projected for last year, our receipts did not fall like we expected. Revenues remain strong and we're optimistic, optimistic about the next fiscal year. The, the past year, we have seen substantial improvements to our park and recreation facilities. We will be receiving a grant to create a bike and walking trail near the aquatic park that we approved tonight. Will also, would be the location of additional nine-hose disc off. That was for a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. As we look back our accomplishments, it would be foolhardy not to make plans for the future. If we don't have a vision for the future and settle for no plans, we begin to die. Our planning and zoning board is now, working now on a comprehensive five-year plan. But the city itself must do more. One, we must look to annex areas to the west of our city limits. We have many benefits to offer those residents and their properties on our tax roads would benefit us as well. We have three full-time firemen. The lowest fire rate that a city of our size can have. We have twenty-one full-time police officers. Ninety percent of our city, and that's only an estimate on my part, has sewer, streetlights, and blacktop streets. I find very few residents down near the high school, along 62 and around the high school, being opposed, being annexed. We need to aggressively do that. Second, the most important improvements to the city can make is finally creating a code enforcement board, which we've been working on for some time. When our neighborhoods have their abandoned and dilapidated homes cleaned up, it will increase the value of every home in Litchfield. Like I said before, homes not fit for dogs shouldn't be occupied by humans. And, uh, we spent a whole day seminar on that this past week. Billy Dallas attended, Earlene, and Tyler Harold about, uh, abandoned and dilapidated properties. We learned a lot. We also have valuable commercial properties that have not been used for years. They are eyesore to our community. We must cite the owners for violations of our new code ordinance at commercial properties worth a million dollars. When being used, it's not right to tax it for pennies on the dollars when it's sitting vacant. And it's an eyesore. Part of the plan for the future includes plans to school future leaders. We must recruit and appoint future leaders to our boards and committees. Fresh and new ideals only come from fresh and new people. Although I'm in great appreciation for what members of our committees and boards have done and we owe them a great debt of attitude, it's time that we, as a community, look for the next generation of leadership to serve here. I again appreciate the work from our department heads, the Budget Committee, and continuing work of the City Council. I count it an honor and a blessing to service your mayor, the mayor of the city of Litchfield, and able to work daily with the good employees who make this city what it is. And it's, it has been good. Hasn't it?
Yes.
We have a good time down here. But now, uh, sometimes it's hard work. Okay. Uh, now some dirty business. Garbage rate increase of three point five percent for ordinance. We get that every year and the cost for, uh, our cost for, uh, getting that hauled off and stuff goes up every year. And I said, we've had some, I've had one or two people talk to me and said that our garbage is too much and went up too much, but we offered a discount to small retail people, uh, beauty shops, hair salons. Uh, we've offered discounts to them, we've got discounts for senior citizens. And we're trying every way to make it a more affordable product. We let people bring stuff to the landfill for free or the transfer station, residents for free. And, uh, we got to do a better job of policing our dumpsters because a lot of people are getting free garbage pickup by bringing their stuff into town and throwing it in their dumpsters. And, uh, we all are aware of that.
Well, I talked to a business person that they, uh, they've gone to lock in theirs because every time they'd go out to put stuff in theirs, it would be full.
It's full.
Couldn't even throw them stuff in, so they start locking it.
I wish there was a, uh, a great solution, and I don't know what it is.
What percentage does, does the dumping rate go up? Is it compared to this three point five?
The hauling away of it?
Yeah.
Uh, Wes?
Does the transfer stations go up as well? When the, when the garbage rates go up, it changes the same?
But I'm not sure what it has gone up this time.
It changes the same rate, right, three point five percent?
Three point five percent.
I think it goes up three point five percent too, Moon. That was my understanding of it.
And that's my ordinance.
I think it's wild it was set up this way.
I do too.
If Marjorie, I mean.
It's like a half a percent over what their increase is for us to haul it off. What they charge us to haul it off, we increase it a half a percent over that.
But really, not many people have taken advantage of the discount for the small business discount and stuff. And it amounts to twelve dollars a month, a hundred and forty-four dollars a year. And over the, I was in business since nineteen seventy-five. Uh, over the years, it's cumulative. And not many people have taken advantage of that.
Senior get a discount too.
Sir?
Senior?
They're senior at discount, absolutely. I can tell you that Tyler's had two more homes tore down on the fifty-dollar tear-down-your-house deal. And we watched on that video the other day. Uh, was you there for the mobile home video?
Mm-hmm.
A lot of communities are doing the same thing with mobile homes. Giving them an opportunity, if they want to get rid of them, uh, for a hundred dollars or whatever, they can drag those things in. And, uh, uh, like I said, uh, a lot of, not all of them, but a lot of them look awful. They, uh, a man talked to me, worked for the analyst service, said he's rigorously called to a, a mobile home, said it's a disgrace what the people are living in. And, uh, I'm ashamed of it. And we need to change, we're going to change that. Uh, are we gonna, this, uh, this rate increase is by ordinance. And we can't escape that. We don't have to vote on it, do we?
No, because it's by ordinance.
Because it's by ordinance anyway.
Yeah, I don't know what.
And, uh.
I think we best always put it on the, on the.
On the agenda.
To notify the public.
Of course, a former council member wants us to buy those fancy garbage cans put through town. And if we ever convert our trucks to pick those up, like some communities have, we'll need them. But that's going to cost us, I think we figured a hundred and fifty, three thousand dollars, wasn't it, Wes?
Yeah, for the cans. And our trucks are already equipped for them.
They are?
Yes. Uh, but the cans just ourselves would be an expense upfront of about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah. And maybe something, I, I like the partnership on those costs. You get a homeowner that's got a dollar or two in it, he'll be a little bit more possessive of it and.
I agree.
Yeah, I do too.
I agree.
And they do look good. We're going to get half of them blue, half of them red.
No, no, we're not.
Yeah. Maybe half of them white. Well, that's something to think about. But like I said, other than that, this is by ordinance and, uh, it comes up every year, so that's it. Okay. Uh, Sabrina? First reading of the, uh, of the proposed budget for the new fiscal year, coming up in just a few days. And this is what we'll really need about tomorrow.
All right. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message have been prepared and delivered to the City Council of the City of Litchfield, Kentucky for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2022 by the mayor of the city. And whereas the City Council has reviewed the said budget proposal and budget message and made all modifications which were deemed appropriate, now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2022 is hereby adopted as follows. The projected cash at June 30, 2021 in the general fund is six million, five hundred, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and five. In the utility fund, ten million, eight hundred, one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two. In the tourism fund, one million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight. Net profit returns, revenues, general fund, three hundred and eighty thousand. Occupational taxes, two million, two hundred thousand. Property taxes, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred. Insurance license taxes, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Franchise taxes, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. ABC application and regulatory fees, two hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred. ABC application and regulatory fees, $230,500, other licenses, $900, restaurant taxes, $770,000 in the general fund, $770,000 in the tourism fund, transfer of restaurant taxes, negative $770,000 in the general fund, hotel taxes, general fund, $7,500, tourism fund, $7,000, I don't know why that's different, transfer of hotel taxes, negative $7,500, mineral severance income, $16,000, rental income, $60,950, other revenue, $755,067, interest income, $31,025, sale of property, $39,000, grant income in the general fund, $20,900, tourism fund, $900, HB 413 base court revenue, general fund, $7,500, incentive pay, $86,000, IDC employee contributions, $114,800, volunteer fire runs, $1,000, Grayson County Fire dues, $135,000, state aid fire department, $11,000, planning and zoning permits, $4,500, municipal road aid, $131,000, garbage pickup fees, $1,390,000, solid waste dumping fees, $700,000, recycling fees, $2,000, animal shelter, animal control revenue, $61,650, parks and rec income, $348,965. In the utility fund, water sales, $2,125,840, sewer sales, $1,765,200, gas sales, $2,802,50, grant rural development funding for water treatment plant, $3,843,000, tourism, that's, okay, tourism, other income out of the tourism fund, $5,750, tourism aquatic center revenue, $194,500. Total current year revenue, general fund, $8,480,257, utility fund, $10,536,90, tourism fund, $978,150. Total revenue and carry forward, general fund, $15,7,562, utility fund, $21,337,872, tourism fund, $2,143,588. Expenditures, the general fund, general and admin, $3,46,350, alcohol beverage control, $391,225, industrial development coordinator, $130,650, police department, $2,142,450, fire department, $863,025, planning and zoning, $120,950, public works department, $2,843,50, animal shelter, animal control, $349,250, parks, $512,690, recreation, $467,425. In the utility fund, water, $2,809,635, sewer, $2,161,400, gas, $2,593,540, capital improvements, $4,253,200. The tourism fund, tourism, $500,017, tourism aquatic center, $594,200. Total current year expenses in the general fund, $10,828,365, utility fund, $11,817,775, tourism fund, $1,094,217. Current year net income loss, the general fund, it's a loss of $2,348,108, utility fund, loss of $1,281,685, and the tourism fund, loss of $116,67. Adjustment for non-cash budget items depreciation in the utility fund, $1,325,000. Projected ending cash balance with carry forward, general fund, $4,179,197, utility fund, $10,845,097, tourism fund, $1,49,371. And I just want to say, I probably will change that hotel and transfer of hotel taxes to match the tourism fund. I don't know why that's too different. I guess I just didn't catch that. Tourism's already approved theirs, but your bottom number won't change, so I think it's okay to do that in the middle of the first and second reading, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so that'll actually go back to $7,000, but it's going to stay the same because we take in the $7,000, we actually transfer that to the tourism fund, so it won't change the bottom line number, but that number will change.
Just a wash.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We'll vote on this tomorrow with a special call meeting. Anybody got any comment about what Sabrina's read that you wanted to ask her about, or any questions about?
You'll need to take a vote for that, for the special call meeting.
Yeah, okay. I think everybody's already signed that, but we want to take a vote to approve the special call meeting, to approve the proposed budget, amend the budget for tomorrow's meeting, because you know the proposed budget has got to be approved prior to July 1. So I hear a motion?
I'm making one.
Clayton? Second, Marjorie. See y'all at 4:30 tomorrow. Did we get any questions, Kristi Higdon?
No.
Let's go down to code enforcement. The one day last week, Kentucky League of Cities provided us a, a all-day seminar on code enforcement, and it's one, one specialist over another one, a particular field of interest of their expertise, and it was a long day. Billy attended a lot of it, and Earlene and Tyler done it all. Of course, they get credit for it. And I had invited some prospective people to attend as well, but I didn't get to call them personally, I just sent them texts. So it was really between us four or five in there, but it was really a good, Billy, what'd you think?
It was a, some program for Tyler. He's going, he's got a lot of work, and Earlene's got a lot of work with it, but I think it's not going to happen overnight, but it'll be a good program once we get it initiated and...
I think it was, like I said, Tyler's had two more homes tore down, and like I said, I thought we'd had more, but so far we're running about three.
And I think that's going to be available, so if someone wanted to view it, it was recorded, so if anybody wanted to see that.
It was...
We could email it to you.
You know, they said, was it Carrollton or Henderson that's put signs in people's yards of abandoned homes? And to me, that kind of stood out, and I made some notes where they're at, I don't know, but...
Yes, notice is always going to be an issue, because some of these properties, people don't even know they own the properties.
No, that's right.
Because they're heirs in estate or what have you, and something that one of the cities was doing was putting signs in the yard of the notifications of the violations, and I think that's an excellent idea, and I jotted this city name, so I'm going to contact them and see if we can get a...
Said, I found out that Carrollton and Henderson both have very active code enforcement boards, and both of them said that they had open invitation to anybody that wanted to come down and work with them and see what they're doing. But now, we need to, Earlene, what do we need to do next to move closer to enacting a code board?
Well, I plan to have a first draft to you in July.
Is there anything the city council can do prior to your first draft?
No, not really.
Okay.
I think it's just going to start with that rough draft and then ask for opinions.
They had a really good segment on mobile homes.
They really did, I was surprised at that.
And what they're doing with them, which, there hadn't been a mobile home built since when 1976.
Yeah.
They're all either modular homes or remanufactured homes or whatever they call them, they've not called them mobile homes for, since 76, I think.
But he was interesting, wasn't he?
But he, he was very interesting.
Yeah.
He was, I think he was talking about turning them in at the landfill, you have to, there are certain things you had to take out of them, appliances and things like that.
Appliances and something, but...
That you did, but I think it would be a good program.
But something else we could do, the ordinance currently with the $50, taking down our homes, we could, we could vote to amend that to include mobile homes.
Yes.
And that would be something we can do now. But in terms of the council, they'll just need to, once that rough draft is to go through it, and then if you want to watch the video, because I think it does make more sense when you, when you go through some type of workshop like that, because you see it in action.
Oh, made a...
Wesley, you probably need to be doing a little research on what they do with them.
With the mobile homes.
Yeah.
If you need equipment to tear them apart or...
Yeah, but I think that, as far as, they get them to us.
Yeah.
And once they get them, I mean, they would have to be able to haul them to us, so...
Right.
Whenever they come in there, it should go right on the trailer that we have to...
Should be a bargain though, if we get them down there. I said, that's on video, anybody's interested, could look, or just could look at certain segments of it, what they are interested in.
There's real strict codes on them, mobile homes too, if you...
Yes, there is a lot of them.
Lot stricter than I thought there was.
Yeah, me too. Okay, that was our code enforcement talk. What's your dumpster talk, Wes?
Is it, Earlene, about the, we was talking about on the, coming up with something for illegal dumping, basically?
I'm working on drafting something on the dumpsters. We talked about this last time, and you had touched on it earlier in the meeting.
Yeah.
And it looks like one of the council members talked about some feedback from a business owner, and what we're looking at there is an ordinance that would address dumpster diving and also the placement of, of trash in dumpsters by people that are not paying.
Redskins.
Pay, yes.
I tell you, dumpster diving, well, I had one, I got one in my store, we're closing the bike shop out, and lots of time, people go through it, and as they go through it, they just throw it down on the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that's the issue with the dumpster diving.
Yeah. It's really serious. This Friday, we've got another event on East Main Market. You've got a, you've got a circuler about that, right here. Of course, the Filling Festival's coming up in July, and the fireworks. Closing of the water treatment plant loan update, this is good news. When we started out this process, the bond issue was going to be like 3.78 or 3.8%. Of course, we borrowed several million dollars, so we, we were been borrowing money from the local bank until we done the bond issue, which was this past week, and we closed that out through the rural development at 1.34, one and a quarter, three quarters of a percent. On the amount of loan that we done, that's a savings of over $80,000 a year over the life of the loan. And undoubtedly, and Bob Crawford thinks, and I do too, with inflation heating up, and it is, that they're going to raise interest rates to slow inflation down. Number one, and number two, had we waited to start this project until now, the cost of materials, a lot of the materials that people are looking at, the suppliers won't even guarantee the price for three or four days. And with the steel and all the stuff that's used in building the water plant, it would, it would almost have doubled. And if you've not been out there, go out there, if you want to go out there, tell me and I'll take you out there. We have a, once a month, on the second Thursday at 1:30, we have a, a water plant update. They claim they're about 80% done right now, it's all under roof, they've done a, Sabrina, you've been out there with them, and it's going, it's going to be a real nice facility. And so you can go out there. Moon Smith, you got anything you want to tell the city council tonight?
Yes.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask David about that when I get to him.
I'm fine.
Clayton Miller?
No.
Marjorie Decker?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Jessica, you have a good trip?
I did.
Okay, good. Billy Dallas?
Do y'all still have your radar trailer?
We do.
Do you use it very often now?
We do, we just, we just haven't put it out here lately, but we're actually getting ready to put it on Wallace Avenue.
Good deal.
So it'll be out this week.
I know Kay Millrow would like to have it too.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, Billy?
No.
Tammy, you got anything you want to talk to us about?
Yes.
Kristi Higdon?
Yes, sir.
Kristi don't get to attend many meetings, but she is our council payable, and she's one of the best employees we've got in the front office, aren't you?
I agree.
Yeah. Of course, Sabrina's our finance officer.
Yeah, Lori wanted me to remind everybody, the first meeting in July will be held on Tuesday, July 6, due to the holiday.
Oh, yeah.
Monday being a holiday, so she just wanted to remind you all.
Tomorrow night, tomorrow 4:30, we'll have a short meeting as well. Earlene?
No.
David?
I do. There's a couple of vehicles that the police department currently has, that I like to get permission from city council to surplus those by putting them on gov deals. The first one is a 2010 Honda four-wheeler ATV that was actually seized by the police department and has been forfeited to us for sale. The other vehicle is a 2018 Ram 2500 Crew Cab that we are currently using. The reason I like to surplus this is this is not a police package truck, it's black in color, it also gets about eight miles to the gallon, and that's the best that it gets, and it's really not, it's, it's really not practical for police patrol. Like I say, this thing could pull a building, and it would be better to be used for some other job tasks by somebody else. It's a nice truck, whenever it is, we'll strip the police package out of it, the police equipment, and it will show no signs of being utilized as a police vehicle whatsoever. And of course, you know, I would, I would like to ask it, whatever this truck brings, we could utilize to replace it with another vehicle.
I think you had three or four new vehicles in the budget, didn't you?
We did, we did. This is, this is aside from that. This is aside from that.
I think...
Let's sell it first and then talk about it.
What's that?
Didn't we put in the budget for that sale and that replacement?
For this one, I think we did.
I think we put in the budget, if you look, I think in the budget...
It is in there.
I'll have to verify to be for sure, but I'm pretty sure that we put a sale of that vehicle and then the same amount going out.
You're finding pickup trucks harder to buy, is that what you're...
They, well, they have actually contacted me and pickup trucks, the police package Dodge trucks are not going to be available for this year, and they actually canceled, canceled our order.
That's what I thought, now what are you going to do?
So our choice is now went to the Dodge Charger.
I see. You like that vehicle anyway.
We do, we do, we do.
Do I hear a motion that David surplus these vehicles?
I make it.
Okay. All in favor? You got anything else, David?
No, sir. Thank you all.
Wes Shaw?
Yeah, actually, I've got a couple of things. The state got back with me on the sign on the square about the tractor trailers.
Yes.
And they've got one that they have been putting up in different cities, it's, sign's got a truck on it with a line through it and all that.
I see.
They're going, as soon as they can get the sign crew to come down, they're going to put it on the pole right there by Sicilian Bank.
Okay, good.
We'll try that out and see how it works.
You know, there's been another truck got up into Kelly Street there in front of Tammy's, and of course, they dragged that ditch there, trying to get over to the industrial park, and could we put one of them steel posts with concrete in it there, Wes, or on that corner where the school board's at? Because they dragged right through that, of course, they might just drag it over the pole.
We can check and see what we can do there.
It's a mess every time they get down there. Anything else, Wes?
Yeah, actually, this week, we're going to try to start doing our mosquito fogging if the weather holds out, and it's not raining tonight, that we're going to do it, more than likely it'll be Wednesday night. So we'll start getting that done, because the mosquitoes are starting to get bad.
How many times is a street sweeper here? Only come every other Wednesday?
I'm not sure, I was thinking he was every week.
He comes weekly.
Every Wednesday, yeah, Gary?
Tuesday or Wednesday, one of the two.
Yeah.
Just depends on the weather.
Said, if you got any, I've got Gary's text number. I went out to the street where the college is at, and somebody broke some bottles and stuff, and I just text him and asked him to take care of that, and little special areas that may not need every week, it's, want them to look at, do that, you tell me what sent him a text. Super nice guy, isn't he? What else, Wes?
We got our mulch ground up, our tree lamps and debris, so if anybody needs any mulch or anything, we've been selling it for $5 a truckload.
Okay. Get all you want, bring a big truck.
Any size truck, we've got enough to cover this building a couple of times over, so...
Yeah.
It's just hard to get rid of.
That's good. What else, Wes?
That's all I've got.
You sure? Ruby, you got anything? Matt? Josh? No questions? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So do you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
No.
Thank you all.